Oh, really?
Yeah.
Get freedom.
Okay, we're just about ready to start at 5:59. I hope everybody can settle. I did want to take this minute to remind everybody to turn off their cell phones, please. And then, please make sure that when you're listening to your fellow citizens during public comment or we're discussing anything at the table, that we're respectful of everybody and our neighbors, okay? Okay? Please let's rise to the pledge.
Scott Salute. Please drive me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible).
Remain standing for the invocation, please.
I ask that you give our council wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interest in issues of our time, a sense of welfare in true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, and confidence in what is doing the fitting thing. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Valerie. So, Darian, does everybody have copies of the minutes from like?
Yes.
The first item on the agenda is the review and approval of the minutes from November 19th meeting, our last meeting. Mr. Nebel's seconded.
Mr. Nebel, I know you just got here, we just passed them out, you had a chance to read it.
He was. Yes, I know. Yeah.
Okay. Um, Jason?
Aye.
Any post?
I'm post.
So, the discussion on legal costs, the primary reason that I left this on here was to let people know where we are with the legal expenses for the contraction or the de-annexation. We received our bill from, um, can you see me? We received the bill for the October expenses, and it's $3,555 so far in legal expenses. That includes the lawyer and some of the expenses for the beginning of the study that's required by state statutes. Any questions on that?
I know we had discussions in the last meeting, and I told the people today that I've come to the meeting and bring this to my chart, and in fact, you pulled up front with the correct numbers. And I say the correct numbers because, like I said, I have the attorney bills here. And a quick example of them, if you look at the charts that are up there, you have Mayor Nebel having zero hours from November 2018 to current 2019. Well, it clearly says right in here, the phone calls, Mr. Nebel made emails, et cetera.
Right, but I also explained that I had charged those to town how business because he is the administrator of the town.
Okay.
And so, those were charged to the town.
Okay. So, once again, well, that's one example. We have Mr. Conroy's an example, you an example, and Mr. Scott's example, but you had him down as zero, and in fact, he had 24.4 hours. And it's all in the legal bills from Gray Robbins.
As the town administrator.
No, no, it's just not as a town administrator. So, and it's not broken down like that.
He was the mayor.
Okay, but it wasn't broken down like that.
But that isn't the logic that I use.
And then, you put me down for 96 hours, and I didn't have 96 hours. Once again, if you look at the chart, which is all in here, and people that met me, thank you for meeting me because you looked at this and you saw the true numbers. If you look at my numbers, it wasn't the 96. It was 34.5. Now, added to 34.5, I mentioned 11.2 of it was for the question regarding our part-time officers and the reserve officers, whatever you want to call them, actually, they're called part-time temporary officers, being paid. And the attorney spent 11.2 hours researching that. When in fact, you already had the answer back in January, when she told us that the officers couldn't volunteer their time giving out the surveys.
Counselor McGill. That is an item that we have put to rest. That is a ministry of function.
I'm not bringing that up as an item, as far as the hours for the attorney.
But you're going into it in depth. So, I can actually go through mine as well, and we can read them one by one.
Let's do that.
But rather do a presentation where we sit down and look at the differences rather than taking everybody's time to go through 12 months of bills and our discrepancies.
Okay, but I'm not going to go through every single bill. And like when you went through your chart, I didn't interrupt you once. I let you say, it was on the chart, and it's, no, I didn't. When you were done, I simply said, I held it up, I said, these are false, and they are false.
I apologize.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you see me? I'm sorry. So, it's unfair for me to explain to these people how you misled them because they made you seem like I had 96 hours, when I didn't. Without those other hours, I had 24.5 hours. That's misleading. All the numbers are right there. And thank you for the people that looked at the attorney bills because it spells it out right there.
I dispute that.
You can.
In the next meeting, I will go through step by step and identify where Counselor McGill called or emailed legal, and the actual hours are accurate, 96 hours.
Please, that is false, but no, thank you.
Okay. So, we'll put that on the agenda, Darian, for January.
Yes.
The charter review update. We've currently got four applicants. I know a fifth who has, Graham Wells, who hasn't filled out the forms yet. But we do have blank forms that have all the information on it, including now the definition or the actual distinction of requesting information to be on the Charter Review Board rather than the Planning Board or the Parking Rec Board, right?
Yes.
It's discreetly identified there. Any questions on that? I don't see a bunch of people jumping up. We really do need to get this board settled. If we have five, we're still too short, and we need two alternates, so, alternates, excuse me. So, we really do need at least four more people who would be willing to work on this. This is not something that lasts forever. It's a four to six-month, really intensive effort, and so, it wouldn't, like I said, it isn't a dedication of time for years. Anything else?
On that, no, ma'am.
The discussion to eliminate counselor salaries for the remainder of 2020, going forward for the contraction legal fees and the Charter Review fees expenses. The reason that I brought it back up, I just had mentioned it at the last meeting, was because even though I asked people in the audience not to respond, there were several people who had desired it, who had wanted to discuss it or include it in the discussion. And so...
Sure. Thank you. Like I said, when we first voted on it, the raise, I should say, first voted on the raise, which you got, was it January 2019 or December 2019? When it was pointed out, when you, when you actually voted to give yourself raises in 2018, but they never passed an ordinance. So, it was brought up a year later saying, listen, you made a mistake, we have to go back. When you did it, you voted on still accepting the raise. And there was oppositions in the audience, and a lot of people said, I'm sorry, a lot of people said that, well, they should get the raises, they do a lot of work, from the mayor on down, meeting with the residents, entertaining their concerns, their problems, and what they get paid, they should at least hit that. So, I remember hearing that when they voted on the raises from the audience and other members. Actually, I voted against it. I was opposed to it, but I know a lot of people, especially in the audience, were for the councilman having the raises and the money they get because of the work they do. So, and with this, I don't think it's necessary, especially with this, with this de-annexation going on. I know, like you said, the budget itself is a living document, and there's a lot of areas in there that we can pull from, if we had to pull from some area to pay for this. But it's another good point, like Mr. Nebel said, why are we spending all this money if the people want to be in this, our community? Why just let them out? So, it's, you know, we still have the option to, and to make a motion to, you know, don't go through the legal fees and put it on the referendum for them to vote, let themselves out. So, it's an option to save money because if it does get to a referendum, I believe it costs like $6,000, $8,000, and the town has to pay that, at additional cost and how the attorney costs. So, like, just taking the words out of Mr. Nebel's mouth, they don't want to be here, and they have a large majority of them, I think it was 70% saying they don't. Won't we put it to them to let them out?
That is, 70% is highly speculative. We have a, and the petition that went out, which did not represent 70% of the citizens. So, I think this might need more discussion and consideration, but I am, yeah.
Okay. But are we done with salary things, salaries?
Yeah, because I...
I don't know if anybody else wanted to comment on it.
Yeah, does anybody else want to say anything about the salaries?
I agree that we have other places we can look through.
Okay. Code enforcement. Mr. Ernest, do we have any update on the applicants or anything?
I have two applications, I have another one that's supposed to...
Is it on?
It's on.
I have two applications, I'm expecting another one this week, probably, or next, most likely after Christmas.
When you speak, can you please?
We have a hearing.
You're good, but we have, yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's okay. We have two applications. I have one, I'm expecting another one this week or next week, but I won't be able to make a decision until after the first of the year, because that's when the school starts to train the people, okay?
We need to get a code enforcement certification.
Now, Mr. Ernest, do you know if anybody is going around currently enforcing any of our rules yet?
I have addressed a couple of them. I am not a code enforcement officer.
No.
His question was, do we have anybody going around? I have a couple of comments I've made, I've gone around and talked to the people, but we don't have a code officer, and I am not a code officer, nor am I ever going to do it, just in case someone wants to ask.
But when we do get written requests or written violations or requests from residents, we do look into them, so.
Okay. Because I was going to say, there's a resident, one of the new residents across our new school, was approached by a police officer and said his trailer had to be in the backyard because of our codes. So, I was wondering if we're picking and choosing, or are we actively enforcing these?
So, if we get, if we get a complaint, then we actively follow up.
Either, if you get a complaint, good enough, thank you.
Mr. Ernest?
Yes.
Do either one of your applicants have prior experience?
No, no prior experience.
Specifically with code enforcement.
With the codes, Mayor, I know you sat down at a committee in the middle of the year. What's going on with that?
Nothing is going on with that, no. We looked at the parking, we looked at the most volatile, or the ones that were brought up the most, and we focused on the parking, and we thought we had a good stab at it. We took it to P&amp;Z, and we had a couple of responses from citizens who had done that sort of work previously and said that it really wasn't a very good attempt. And so, we do have to go back and find a group of people who would be willing to look at the codes and ordinances now to address that. So, right now, it is what it is, it is, has not been changed from the, especially specifically 166 that talks about parking and the differences between whether you built a house that has space in the back, or whether there's an impediment to getting anything in the back, and how many you can have in the front. It stands right now. Okay, we're on item five, which is the order of the agenda. And we had a, an order that we followed for quite a while. And in, I believe it was February, March or February, we were reminded that the town charter was, which is our law and Bible, had a different order for the agenda. And so, the mayor at the time and the council agreed to go back to that order. At the bottom of the town charter, it says that it can be changed at the discretion of the mayor or the town council, or, and the town council. And I got several calls from people, Representative Sabatini, a couple of other people, saying that it really was more important to have public comment earlier. And so, I moved it up to under new and old business because the majority of the citizens that come to the meetings are really very active and are interested in staying for the new and old business and making sure that they understand what's going on. So, I put it there so that they would have information about what we were attempting to do on the council for the town, and then put the public comment. There is the opportunity to move public comment to the very first thing on the agenda. And have that taken care of, it still would be the three minutes per speaker, all of that, and then start the agenda with the old discussion, new discussion, and reports by the departments. So, we have that option. We would want to then decide which way we want to do it, and then make sure that the Charter Review Committee includes that change in the charter, so that we don't continue to have these conflicts between what is stated in the charter, which is what we have to follow because that is filed with the state, and what we have in our ordinances, which in some cases, in fact, Mr. Benson found another omission in the well ordinance that we had. Please silence your phones, thank you.
Mayor, I know a lot of towns have public comment in the beginning of the meeting, and they also offer it at the end. I'm not opposed to that, the more we can hear from the residents, the better. So...
Do you want to fall back to our old, to what we were following originally?
Put also in the beginning, like you just said, have public comment right in the beginning, and then have one at the end. But obviously, at the end, if they're going to talk about the same thing they did in their beginning, no, it's the same topic. But at the end of the meeting, when they learn something new, the topic they want to talk about, it gives them an opportunity to talk again.
Well, we do ask for public comment during the discussion of the new and old business.
You knew we were going to vote on something, yeah.
That's what I was going to ask, was that going to eliminate...
Oh, Matt, to speak forward.
I'm sorry. And was that going to eliminate them being able to speak on each topic?
No.
So, they'll still be able to, they'll still be able to do that?
Yes, if they're going to vote or have something, some discussion. We'll figure that out.
But, but there is a charter, but, and there's the ordinance. 42-6 is actually the ordinance. So, it's just a matter of changing the ordinance, not the charter. I don't think it's...
The charter, actually, it's in the charter.
It is in the charter?
Mm-hmm.
I look right at the top.
Yeah, it's one of those odd things that actually shouldn't be in the charter. A charter should be more broad and...
Because I, I know it's real, that, not only is the charter old, but it's real gentle and short.
It should be.
And I don't know if listed, if it was listed in there. I know it's listed in the ordinance, but, but, not to bring you in the spotlight, I know you work for the town, so I don't expect you to know off the top of your head, so.
So, we just have to decide what we want to do. So, if we, we change the public comment to be at the beginning, right after the pledge, basically, or roll call, then we would go on to do the approval of the minutes and all the rest of our business as normal.
I'm going to agree, I said, if we have, have public comment in the beginning, they can discuss the topics, and when they come up, we're going to vote on them, and then at the end as well, as long as they're not talking about the same thing they talked about the first time. So, I'm good with that.
So, you do want to have two public sessions?
Absolutely.
David, you have to talk into your mic, Counselor.
I got it.
Just give them the...
When we used to have it open to two comments, we would get a lot of secondary repeat. And that seemed to be a difficult thing.
You really have to bring the mic closer to your mouth.
That seemed to be a difficult thing because somebody would make a comment that might include just a word or two about item number two, but then when item number two came up with a comment, they thought they should do it again. But the dabble controlled that. Just simple.
Yep.
Okay. So, do we want to just adopt this for the next meeting?
As far as the two?
Yeah, and putting public comment first, right after the pledge and review, or the invocation or roll.
Does it have to be written on, or nothing else?
No, no, the council thinks we're undecided, just to do that. But like the mayor said, it says right in the bottom of the ordinance, she has the authority to adjust, tweak the agenda, so, facing what we're doing, so...
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but I think the ordinance should really reflect what we're doing, so it's not changing every time. Okay.
So, you just want to make the vote on next time, or now?
No, we can vote on it now.
Okay.
So, is there a motion? A motion in a second?
In a second. I made a, I made a motion.
Any comment on including public comment first and last? Yes. Did you fill out a form? Please fill out a form.
No, but I will.
You have to turn the mic off.
Marie Galley, 1104 North Tangerine. My comment is just, we could try for a couple meetings, you know, to what David said, if people become redundant and it makes the meeting go, hmm, three times as long. Try for a couple meetings and see if conversation before and after a public comments works. And it might, might not.
Okay.
And then just go back to the way it was before, just pick when within the meeting.
Clay Ormsby, 301 North Lakeshore, Howey Hills. I'm opposed to it. I am all for public comment. I stand in front of you almost monthly with a comment. But I do come here to listen to town business, and I don't necessarily believe that I have to spend maybe the first hour of every meeting listening to the common complaint of my fellow citizens and not hearing actual town businesses, which is the only reason that I come here. So, I think that as long as I'm given an opportunity during the meeting at some point to have a public comment. The second thing is, the other reason I don't think we should start off with it, is in many cases, I actually come up with something to say based on the discussion of council. So, you prep me with your agenda items, and then I come up with something that I want to respond to regarding that agenda. And I don't have that going on before I get to the meeting. You haven't had a chance to respond to the list of items or the list of subjects that we're going to discuss. So, I think personally, it's always the time to start off with 45 minutes of rant and complaints before we kick off what we're here to actually do, which is to run this down.
Thank you.
Sal Galley, 1104 North Tangerine. I think it's a great idea, and I think the public needs more of an opportunity to be involved in these meetings and express their opinions. That's what I think.
I was just going to say, to Clay's and Sal's comments, I think we can make it work to vote somehow, some way, we just got to figure it out. And do like Marie, that maybe just try something now and then and see if it works. Try some best. Roll call. Ms. Burke.
We need a roll call, or just all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. So, at the next meeting, we will have public comment right after roll call. Okay, so, the sixth item on the agenda is, I don't know, let me do this so I can look forward when this gets up now, was brought up, it was the consideration to raise the canopies of the trees on Lakeshore. There are several reasons to do this, and it has been done previously or historically. The last time was a decade ago. It is, the arborists will tell you that it improves the health of the trees, we've actually talked to several arborists previously about this. But at this point, we don't really have the funds in the budget to be able to do this work. I spoke with Mr. Ernest, and the reason that it was brought up was because it hadn't been done for a decade, and those kind of things cycle around, and it was time to bring it and discuss whether we should do it this year, or put it on the agenda for next year, or what we should do. So, it isn't something that just benefits the Lakeshore residents, though. It really does benefit all of the people that use Lakeshore. And of course, it keeps those natural resources healthy for us. And we want those citrus trees and the other trees that are there to remain healthy and intact, because we're losing quite a lot of trees in town from old age and bad root maintenance and everything else, so.
And I think with the cost of it, I think at the next budget, when we start talking about the budget for the fall next year, I think we should start talking about adding that cost in at that time.
Yes.
I think it's been 10, 12 years since Mr. Ernest says, since it's last been trimmed. I think waiting another, you know, seven, eight months won't hurt.
And in conjunction, what I just said, we are losing quite a lot of trees, older trees that are on the right-of-way, they're, they look like they're in residence lawn, but they're actually town trees because they're in the right-of-way. And we do need to discuss and look at for next year, some sort of a tree replacement program, whether we do it as a town or we look for grants. There are quite a few grants out there that would work with us. We may in fact be able to use impact fees depending on what we look at and what we do to change. We had talked last meeting about changing the way we allocate impact fees within the state laws, of course, but we have some locally in Howey, some very strict definitions of how we can use our impact fees, so.
Good thing, to a combination of that quote and what you just talked about, I think around June, we could probably put some bids out, get an idea that how to do all the trees, and then when it comes to budget time, we'll have an idea with the budget.
We probably should do that in April, since budget starts in June.
I'm just thinking, when you get a quote out there, they only last so long.
Yeah, well, we would have to let them know.
Yeah, so...
They would have to do their bid so that it would be for the next fiscal year. Yeah, okay.
Which is something we can talk about when that time comes, but we need to make sure also that if it's underneath the power line, we don't plant a tree. It needs to be under coverage versus over covered.
Yes.
Like all our trees down the right-hand side of 19 are all under, you know, power lines that happen to be cut in half. So, those all should have been planted in like, something like crepe myrtles or something like that, grow underneath the lines.
Yeah, hindsight is 20-20.
Right, well, I know, I know.
But we also have to look at placement very carefully, where we're looking at the, where the water mains are, where the water lines are, all of that sort of thing. There's quite a lot that goes into that planning to make sure that we're planting the appropriate tree in the appropriate place.
And then also, we have all the new gas lines that just ran through town as well, so...
They were replacement, so they didn't really put any new ones, and they just replaced them. Okay. Any comment on the trees? Okay. Number seven, consideration and approval to expand, expend $26,224 on register heads for utility water meters throughout the town. I'll let Mr. Ernest explain this mostly, but it will really allow us to do the appropriate study and analysis needed on our water utilization for our corrective action plan, for our future cup, and for all future planning and budgeting, pricing for water.
We have approximately 100 old meters still left, some of them are 56 years old. As we replace a meter in town, we replace them with a new digital unit. But we, we have some that need to be replaced. We actually have the money in our budget to do it, but I thought it would be best to bring it to you so you know what's going on. We plan for this all year. It'll take about a month to get them replaced, and about two days to get them in town. All we're doing is replacing the cap of the meter, not the meter.
It is also a capital expenditure, right? So, it's coming from, it's coming from the appropriate impact fees, and which have to be used for that type of work. So, it isn't actually part of our ad valorem tax at this time, but it is an impact fee. Yeah, all right.
So, maybe, take it. Make it happen.
So, this theory that we should do it.
Wait just for a second, any public comment?
Sorry, public comment? Nope, no. Sorry, it happened so fast. Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor Miguel?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Counselor Nebel?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously, thank you. Okay, number eight. Is the consideration and approval to execute an agreement for auditing services for fiscal year, the next three fiscal years? This is wrong, actually, Darian, it should be 19, 20, 20, 21.
Yes.
19, 20, 21, 22.
It's not last year.
Yeah, that we have to have it.
Oh, that's right. You're absolutely right. We closed the fiscal year, but we haven't audited it yet.
Correct.
So you're right. I apologize. Okay. So the firm that we got was, the one response to our RFP that we got was from Binney Accounting. Binney Accounting, which is in Clermont, which is, there are two really good points about this. I've actually received some very good comments about Binney unsolicited. They say that they are very good, they're very local, they know what they're doing. And because they're in Clermont and not in Gainesville or a branch in Orlando, they're much more accessible to us. And that was one of our struggles during not only this last audit cycle, but previous audit cycles.
Is that the only one we got from the RFP?
That is the only one we got from the RFP. We did solicit a couple of other ones. They came in much higher, and they weren't as local or as well recommended as Binney.
Now, what's the cost compared to the other company?
This cost is very reasonable. It's actually exactly what we budgeted, $22,000. So the other one came in at 30 plus?
Yeah, 31.
31? And?
28.
Okay.
What is their current?
22.
And that's, and that's what they came in as for three years.
Yeah.
Price stays the same.
When did we spend the year prior?
22.
22, correct. But the year prior to that, we spent 28. What happened was when we, we basically had a bad experience with them last fiscal year. So what they did was they came back and they told us that they would offer us a better pricing for this past year to prove their services. And then when we went through the audit of last fiscal year, it was the same old, same old. It was very hard to communicate, it was delayed. So that's why the mayor opted to go out for an RFP.
I was going to say, I remember former Mayor Chris Sears was going to get rid of them two years ago. Couldn't talk about that.
Correct.
Because they weren't doing like they were supposed to.
And like I said, basically, the pricing was to save the contract.
Any public comment on this? Any other discussion? Okay. You had a chance to review it, the information? It was?
It was.
Okay, good. I thought it was quite a good proposal, actually. Very clear. And that very good timeframe, but we're already a month behind. Yes. So we need to do this.
Any motion?
Yeah. Roll call vote? Yes, we go. Counselor Scott?
Yes.
Counselor McGill?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
Counselor Nebel?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the next item is the discussion of ordinance, well, it's in section 175-2. It has to do with the construction of the wells. And Mr. Benson was the one who found that we have a discrepancy in a newer addition of component to this. You can have in town, the ordinance approves or allows for shallow irrigation wells. And in this ordinance that is still published out there that we need to pull apart of, it says that the town issues the permits, and that is not the case. We have, we used to issue the permits, because when I dug my well in 2005 for my old house, the town did do the permit issuing and the inspection. But I believe it was 2008 or so, we started to defer to Lake County. And it's actually the Lake County Health Department that issues the permits and then arranges for the inspections. And so I put this in here, and then Mr. Bent, to discuss the change to the ordinance, to correct it. And Mr. Benson, you sent me an email saying that we had corrected it, but that it wasn't reflected correctly online in the ordinance.
Yes, that is correct. And I sent that off to MuniCode today to get that code updated.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. Any comment on the wells? Do you want to? We can just hold it in.
There you go. It's on.
Okay, Benny Benson, 406 South Florida. I brought this up after investigating to put a well in for myself and to help some of the other residents that are complaining about the water bills. The cup is an issue. We are over cup now. We, as I understand, we're having to pay?
No.
You're not having to pay for your outage?
No.
All right. I stand corrected. If you have a well, which you can go down to 125 feet without additional permitting as an individual, you can contract it, you're not affecting the cup. You're not paying the water fees. So it's kind of a win-win if you want to put the money out to get a well. There are highs and lows. So this is how I came about finding this error. So if the people in town were interested in a well in the past and came across this ordinance, they found that they could not put this well in. That's why I found.
Actually, the ordinance said you could put the well in for irrigation. It was just in error as to where you get the permit, whether you get it from Town Hall or Lake County, and that can be very confusing.
Well, it's kind of a dead issue because it says you have to get the permit from the town, and the town won't issue the permit, because they don't issue the permit. So in effect, you'll have no permit to be obtained. Okay.
Chief, you had put on item 10, the consideration and approval to appoint Clay Perser and Clay Ormsby to the police pension board?
Yes, ma'am. Every two years, we have to re-certify people on the pension board. These gentlemen are up actually in January, just trying to get ahead of the game. The pension board already has accepted Clay Ormsby on advice of our council, and we recommend that we defer him to the council as well.
So it's a three-person board?
Five-person.
Okay. You and?
Yeah, John Hamlet is on the board. Two have to be police officers.
Okay.
Two have to be citizens, and one can be at large.
Okay.
So anybody, Clay's already on it?
No. Yeah, they've all been on the board. Correct.
So do we have to vote as a council to approve them being on the pension board?
Correct.
Okay.
Just like planning and so many.
Can we vote on it individually? Because I have an issue with one of them, which I want to talk about. I don't want to punch the other two or the third.
The, is the board seated right now?
Yes.
And we just have to reaffirm them for January?
For two-year term.
Okay. I guess we can approve them. So the first one we would consider would be Bill Harrington. Is there any comment on Bill Harrington? Okay. All in favor of Bill Harrington? Aye.
Aye.
The next one is Mr. Perser.
Trey Perser.
That's the individual I have a problem with. Lately, he's been vocal, slandering me as a council member, sitting council member. He also filed a false ethics complaint against me with the, with the state and all the election board, which they both just were dismissed. And we should also look into, which was brought to my attention, if they're going to be on the pension board, if they're, have a history of being responsible for their own finances since they're sitting on the pension boards. So that's something that was brought to my attention. But if Mr. Perser can't refrain from slandering city council members, I don't think we should vote him onto the board.
I've had very good interaction with Mr. Perser. He was actually quite respectful, and I haven't had any issues with him. I think he has been on council for recently. In fact, he was a town council for quite a while.
That's right. From the 80s, yeah.
And he has been on the pension board for two terms.
I believe so.
Yes. And has done quite a thorough job with that. In fact, he worked with Mr. Harrington, helped get our expenses down exponentially. I think it was almost $8,000, wasn't it? Or was it more?
$8,000, that sounds about right.
Yeah, I think so.
So this is Derek, two years ago, he was the second term.
Please speak louder.
I was just asking, will this be everybody's second term?
I think this is going to be their third term, if I remember correctly.
If I am mistaken, I think, I know, I think Clay's been on it for, ever since I've been on the council, so.
I have a comment.
Can you come up to the thing?
Yeah, I've been on for 22 years. We're very quick to get rid of people, for all kinds of reasons. But you've got no plan on how you're going to replace them. You can't fill your boards as it is. Second of all, correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, they don't have to approve it.
They do.
They do. I thought it was just complimentary.
They have, they have to, they have to prove Harrington and Perser and by the attorney. The pension board appoints you because you're at large.
All right, then that's the.
He just recommended they second it.
Those are my two comments. You can't get people to, this is a hell of a lot of work to work on a pension board. You're not going to look at my investments. You're not going to look at how I handle my checkbook. You can find somebody else to do it. All right? But I will stay on that board as long as I can serve this town. But you've got to give these people credit. It's a lot of work, a lot of homework, a lot of research. We get together on a regular basis. We have our own attorney by law. I apologize for my irritation, but I'm a volunteer.
Still have to vote? Yeah, we do. We have to. In favor?
I am in favor.
They've done a good job all these years.
May. Against?
So we, it would fail technically?
Vote a tie is a.
A tie is a fail.
That was just for trying to write.
That's the answer.
Chief, now the question would be, would the next one, would the next vote be to Clay to be on the board and not at large?
I guess that's what he recommended.
Right? Okay. I just wanted to know, would that be, so Clay wouldn't be at large, he would be voted on to the board?
No, he's still at large.
Okay.
By our party.
Okay, we were, we're down one person.
Okay.
Well, he's still at it to January.
That's true. Okay.
We all have to these meetings to listen to town business. If you don't use your microphones, we can't hear you. Please, please use your microphone.
Trying, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So the next vote is to approve Clay Ormsby?
Correct.
I thought we didn't have to, because he's on the.
No, the lawyer suggested that we approve him.
Correct.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have to tell you, I'm, I'm really very concerned about that Trey Perser vote, because you talk about retaliation for people who are using their free speech, who have brought to our attention the issues, issues with the town respectfully. And with, and you're showing a bias towards somebody who has served this town faithfully, faithfully and well for many, many years.
And what are you basing it on? Because when he's a councilman, he got sued. Do you, do you know how, how it contributes to the pension board? I know Mr. Harrington contributes a lot, and he's a very smart individual.
Yes.
And Clay, 22 years, so you're just basing on blanket statements?
This isn't, I am not.
So, but there's difference between free speech and someone getting slandered and lied about. It's a big difference.
I don't think there.
Well, because it didn't happen to you.
I think there is a difference, but I also think, I know that this is a real issue. Okay, we are now, yes, you absolutely can.
Marie Galelli, 1104 North Tangerine. I'm not quite sure what the police pension board does, but I don't have to know because I'm not on it. If Trey Perser per Clay has saved $8,000 or whatever, by what he does as a job, it's a job, I, my opinion is it shouldn't be personal. The person can be on the board and do his job, and that whatever the personal stuff is, it's got nothing to do with the business of the council and the pension board. It is not a personal item. It is a business discussion. We need five people on the board to do the job, and that's the way it should be done.
I'm going to vote a comment.
Ditto.
Ditto. That one, this is Donna Klein.
701 North Lake Shore.
701 North Lake Shore. She is reaffirming what Marie Galelli just voiced.
Cynthia Smith, 308 North Palm, ditto.
So are we doing?
Charlotte Mafia, 201.
Okay, everybody now. Okay. We can have, we are going to go on to public comment now. So if you would like to reaffirm, please fill out the form, come to the podium. I think Donna did it just because it's.
On the podium.
Okay, we are open for public comment now.
Will you want to bring your names?
Yes.
Can I just say from here, I just wanted to remind you that Mr. Perser is a taxpayer and a citizen. What are you doing?
Guess I am for people coming up here five and six times. Mr. Perser is a taxpayer. He is a citizen. He has certain rights, just like anybody else. He's not just a board member.
Clay, excuse me. Would you please stop? That is very distracting. Thank you.
Oh, sure.
Sorry, Clay.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't think so. Okay, now we are definitely going on to citizen comment, public comment. Okay, do you have your timer?
I'm ready. I have, I already have her sheet.
Okay.
My sheet's full now. Hello, my name is Amanda Gallagher of 203 East Crotton Way. I am not a public speaker. I am super nervous, but I'm here because I have been and am being harassed by our police department. Please bear with me through this because I'm totally out of my element. I moved here in April 2018 and fell in love with this town, as most of you did, or do. Shortly after moving here, I was stopped entering Howie on my motorcycle. There was a bike, a car, then myself. The lights went on, the truck pulled out. I pulled over, provided all my information, was told I was free to go. The next week, my landlord called me, stating that Howie Police Department had called him, stating that I better watch my behavior in this town. I didn't do anything wrong. I'm not sure what they were trying to do or what they were trying to accomplish with this tactic. Is this common practice by landlords of being, a person being stopped with no warning ticket or anything being wrong? I don't know. I went to the police station today to obtain records and calls to report that I'm starting, that I'm seeing more harassment. I went over their numerous calls, over 11 of them, that my neighbor calls as noise complaints and civil, civil matters. I asked the chief why they were coming out when Howie has no noise ordinance. He confirmed that there is no noise ordinance, but the chief stated that they are responsible for responding to disorderly calls. Disorderly calls, huh, sir? That's wrong, and that's a lie. Per Lake County Call Center, all of the calls that are listed, not one of them are listed as disorderly calls. They're listed as noise complaints and civil matters that you guys have been coming out to for my, for my neighbor lately. So you lied. Also, Howie's not responsible for noise ordinance calls, I'm pretty sure. I asked the chief today about the three calls to my house that Lake County had no record of, where officers responded, and I also have video proof of all of these. There was no answer to that question. Chief became angry and said that I could not have the call records I requested today, and once again stated to me, Amanda, I don't have a timeframe for that statute, and I'll[1788.04] get to it when I get to it. Let me paraphrase that statute. Most instances, an agency should be able to provide a copy of a single personnel file in less than 24 hours. Which is that? I should have it in 24 hours, not, not, I'll get to it when I get to it.
Is that what I said?
I, I, don't get away with my time, please. Astetula PD has been at my house three times for noise complaints. Why can't our officers handle a noise complaint by themselves? Why do we pay them? What are we employing them for? One time Officer Bannick stated that she was not handling the call, stating that she's not taking the lead and she was only there because it was her jurisdiction. What the hell does that even mean? Corporal Hammack today stated that he was at one of those calls and overheard my call on the radio, and that's why he came. But when I called him out on their live and stated that Lake County had no dispatch for that caller, that, that date, they had nothing, for, for, nothing for me and nothing to say. I asked him to look really quick at their paper little log book that was sitting right in front of his face, and he refused to do so at that time. This department has harassed and targeted me and my family with so much animosity and hate, that I can't even control my emotions anymore, which are clearly displayed in my videos. Something needs to be done about this police department and certain officers. Nobody should go through what I am going through and what I have went through. Protecting and serving Howie residents is a joke. This is apparently an ongoing problem with the police department targeting Ha, certain Howie residents. I am now seeking legal counsel about this mistreatment, and I will win. You mayor are now publicly aware and ultimately responsible to do your job. It's your move, time to sit up and do the right thing for this town and its people. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I would remind people during their comment that they should be respectful.
I'm being very respectful. It's all facts, and I can prove everything. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Does this mean that the meeting is over?
No.
Well then, what is it we're commenting on?
This is the public, public comment section, where you can comment on, this is the public comment section.
Okay. Well, I, I just think that being a volunteer for this town, and I have been a volunteer on different occasions, doesn't give you the right to perpetually do whatever. I think if you're an upright citizen, you're an upright citizen. I, I'm still in favor of phasing out from our police department into the county police department. I think we could save money doing that, and I think there have been a lot of problems. And I, I, I think it would be a step in the right direction. And I still think this town is being run by a group of people, a clique, and that really holds firm control on this town. And it's a shame. I think more citizens should have something to say about who elects the mayor, not just a few people. And I, I just think it's wrong. I guess that's it.
Well, thank you for volunteering to be on the charter review committee.
Okay.
That's what I said, thank you. I wasn't being sarcastic, I was, I was just letting you know that I was thinking. Additional public comment? Okay, on to town reports, town hall.
I am gonna ask Ms. Fran Wagler to come up and speak about the Christmas festival and the Boy Scouts.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, and residents of Howie. I, the Boy Scouts are very thrilled right now. They've received many generous donations from the Giving Tree to get uniforms, and so they should be looking better for the parade than they were looking for Veterans Day. So I wanna thank everybody that participated in helping me with that. No small feat, so I appreciate that. Next Friday, this Friday, this Friday and Saturday is the Christmas Festival here in our lovely town. Friday night, it's 5:30, 5 to 8 p.m., and it's block party down central, all the way to Lake Shore. And then on Saturday, it's same, down central and across Lake Shore. So we have many things going on.
Okay, so the finance report?
It, it wasn't provided, oh, I apologize, it was not provided at this meeting, as Russ and I are working on creating a new format. We actually got the format, sorry, it's hard to click at both. We actually got the format from the town clerk at Astetula, and it is a lot more detailed. So we're actually working on converting our old format into a more detailed financial report.
And the reason that I included budget under there was, there was some discussion as to what a budget is, and we have called it a living document. When we identify, just briefly, the amount that we have with the categories, we're looking at really a patch. We're looking at the, what we are planning, conscious for to, to spend in those different categories and the different cost centers. And there may be within the cost center, or even within the higher level item, some ability to move funds back and forth. If we have a larger expenditure here, but we aren't gonna spend up here, we move those funds. It is not a living document in that it can grow exponentially without restraint, and I wanted to make that clear. What we're looking at is, when we define the budget, we're looking at making sure that we live within that budget, but since we're all human beings, and we know things change, we do have the ability to, to move funds. For example, the fixing of, or changing of the register heads, it's a capital expenditure under those impact fees for water and sewer, so. Any other, anything to add, Darian?
No, ma'am.
Okay. The police report.
Madam Mayor, the only thing I'd like to say, the events Ms. Gallagher gave today were totally incorrect. It happened that way, and I'll end on that note.
Public services.
Okay, let me, let me bring you up to date, this says about the library, where we stand on the bids. We had a budget of $500,000 was a grant. Now bids came in two weeks ago. The low bid was 599,852. The next bid was 608,800. The top bid was 618,511. That's $99, $99,000 beyond our budget. I've talked with two of the contractors and the architect, we're working on the process of value engineering, which means we will trim things down, one way or the other. We will build the building. It's not gonna start, probably till sometime in January, and it has a six-month period to build it. I feel good about it. I've already had several good comments from our contractors. One of them doesn't care to do it, two of them are working on it. As far as that, you still have water? Dirty? Dirty? Raise the raze, raise it. I'll have to raise the raze to clean it.
Food enforcement, we don't have a report, other than the discussion that we had previously. Library, Tara submitted a written report, which is in your materials. Oh, excuse me, JoJo is here. Sorry, JoJo.
Sorry. I told her, JoJo.
She did, she told me.
Show you all.
No, I won't.
Hello, good evening, JoJo Lo. I am at 139 East Central, and I'm the president of the Friends of the Library. And so Tara had asked me to let you know that we have an advisory board, we have two members that serve on the advisory board, and they have agreed, both Pat and Tasia have agreed to stay on as advisory board members. And they've done a great job. Both of them go, although one's, has voting rights and the other's the alternate, unless one of them is not there. We have not a whole lot of activities this month, because we have the big Christmas festival. But this Wednesday, the Recipe Club is having a big cookie exchange, so if you wanna bring cookies, and exchange, and talk, and eat, and chat, and sing Christmas carols, if you want.
Exchange for money, or for other cookies?
That's up to you. Last year, we had a noon years Eve party at the library at 12:00 noon for families and kids, and it was very, very well attended, so we're doing that again. It'll, we will start at 11:00 on the 31st. Most libraries, Sean told me, that are closed that day, but we're open, and we will have a party from 11:00 to 1:00. We will have sparkling grape juice, and games, and music, and at 12 o'clock, we'll make the toast, and we'll have a bubble wrap stomp. I mentioned the Giving Tree, it's at the library, it has a lot of ornaments still on it, and I know some of you had one, and have done some wonderful, wonderful things in this town. There's pictures on our library Facebook page of people doing different things, and really, everybody is so appreciative. If you haven't done anything, come by to the library and pick up an ornament. Or two, or three. And if you take a picture, and you can post it on the Facebook page, and it'll go to the visitors' post, but we'll bring it up and put it on the main page for you. The last thing is the bake sale, somebody was asked about the drop-off. I will be at the library on Friday from 12:00 to 4:00, where you can drop off your baked goods for the event on Saturday. Please don't rain.
I was gonna say that at the end, bring your umbrella.
Yeah. We brought them down early, because we knew it was gonna rain Saturday morning, we brought them off to my apartment right there at Lake Shore, and my house smelled like a bakery the next morning. And then, we took them all, and we had just masked people coming and helping out, and just taking them all out of my apartment, but I don't wanna do that again, so. No rain, please. Any questions?
Good.
Thank you, JoJo.
You're welcome. Mr. Wilk?
Mayor, councilors, you asked for an update on the feasibility study that, that must be done under state law for the proposed contraction of the Venetia South neighborhood. The Orlando consulting firm of Paulson Bennett has been contracted to do that. The particular person that from Terry Bowley is a planner, and actually has a law degree, and she's done these kinds of studies before, which is pretty rare, because contraction rarely happens in this state. And you don't find a lot of lawyers or consultants that have worked on those kinds of projects before. She's made a lot of progress. As you recall, that, that study has to look at the feasibility of de-annexing in terms of what it does to revenues and expenses and tax burdens to not only the neighborhood of Venetia South, but also the remaining residents of the, the rest of the town. She has to look at and analyze the effect on services that the town provides, that's everything, police, fire, rescue, streets, drainage, water, sewer. And she's made, she's done a lot of work and, and has made a lot of progress. She has a number of questions, and she is asking for a meeting with, I and my partner, I'm glad I've already met with her, we've given her the information we can give her, and she needs to meet with, with town hall, with the mayor and the clerk, and with John. And she's got a number of questions, so when that meeting gets done, then she'll be able to finish the report. I would imagine it'll be after the first of the year, before the report's done.
You will make that call, make sure that those meetings happen.
And Tom, once that's done, what's the next step after that?
Then it comes back to town council for consideration on the referendum.
Okay.
Okay, now we're up to council members. Councilor Nebo.
The only thing I can report on, at least that's here for me, is I have brought my Christmas goodies over to the, to the town hall.
The library.
Yes. Other than that, I haven't done, I've only kept laying a lot of hot food, actually, the last couple of days, I've been on the hot floor, I'm surviving.
The mayor pro temp is out for health reasons.
I'll be here as much as I can, and it's hitting bad.
Good.
Still woozy. Never know when it's gonna be, it might be, it's more testing.
Okay, Councilor McGill.
Yes. Who, um, this was asked of me, who's currently the IT, do we have an IT person for the, the town?
We have Smartware.
Smartware?
Correct.
And I know the IT person for the police department, your member's name, now maybe he's recently quit, do we have someone to replace him, or?
Nope. We're talking, the issue with that is that they have to have certain certifications to be able to touch our documentation, or, you know, the information that we've got in our systems. And so we have to find somebody that's CIGA certified and several other things, so it is not an easy task.
It's not. And the reason why I ask is, doing a couple of records requests, I see that the ex-chief, Curtis Robbins, has been at the police department doing IT work. So, apparently, you're not, you're not aware of that?
No, no, I am.
You're aware of it?
I know that he, he hasn't been there lately.
He stops by every now and then, but he, he's still a volunteer with us?
Yeah.
And he is CIGA certified, right?
Okay.
So he assists.
So he's a volunteer, and he's got the certifications, you're saying?
Yeah.
And he's got the updates? Okay. Because I just asked before, and I said, no one was IT person, so.
Well, we don't have an IT person, we have a volunteer that is assisting us with IT.
Okay.
Periodically, when he has time, and is feeling well enough, yeah.
Okay. The next thing is, I know we talked about the Venetia thing, and, and like I said, Mr. Nebo, I guess we can bring it up next meeting, as far as the amount of money we're spending, we'll get an update on that when Tom comes back. As far as what kind of money we're, we're looking at spending in the future, and possibly we can stop that bleeding and, and make a vote as a, as a council to decide one way or another. But I know we already talked about it, so I'm not gonna bring that up again. We talked about the 42 dash 6. Last meeting, I asked you, Madam Mayor, about records requests, and I still haven't got some, I asked you to possibly intervene, to see what can be done.
I know you talked to Darian about our records request.
What's that?
You asked me to talk to Darian about public records.
Yes, yep.
She, she, she did speak with me. I, between the Christmas festival and the list, and list of public records requests, I promised Councilor McGill that I will give them to you before the next meeting.
I know, but I know you're not the obstruction of it. So, I'm not blaming you, because I know you're busy, especially with the Christmas holiday vessels among us, so. It's other things that I wanna look into, and they're very easy requests, it's just copy and paste and emails, so.
It just, we are overrun with public records requests, and we are shorthanded, and there are many, many things that have to be prioritized, to make sure that we're getting our town business done as well, and so.
Okay, it's, okay, it's been 90 days, but I'll wait till the next meeting. We talked, we talked last meeting, I gave you a copy of it, Mayor, the audit from the sheriff's department?
Yes.
And you wanted a chance to, to read it, which I gave you a chance, I didn't wanna spring it on you.
No, I read, I read the audit, and I had read it before.
Yes.
I did speak with the officer that was in charge of doing that audit, they have declined to come and provide a report at the town council.
That, that's what I heard as well, because I reached out for them, because I would love for them to come and do a, I'm sorry, I'm not looking at the, from, uh, they would love to give a, a talk about the audit they did. You know, the fact that they used five different people from the sheriff's department to do that audit, and the fact that it was, it wasn't a complete audit. Matter of fact, the Lake County Sheriff's, at the beginning of the audit, says, we take an objective look at the police department. But if you go through the audit, they obviously didn't, because they didn't look at all the policies. And on top of that, a lot of the critical policies. And for those of you who don't know, critical policies, like use of force, pursuit driving and such. And with that, this seems to have been implemented properly, properly. So if you read the whole audit.
It is online, it's been online for months.
Yes. But to explain how, like, right here, Lake County Sheriff's Department stated in a report that the audit would be limited and not complete. So they were right there, said, it's gonna be limited, we're only gonna do so much work on it, and it's not gonna be complete.
And that's what I asked for.
Yeah. And they also stated that, the conclusion of the audit, that they only reviewed certain policies. Nor was it, audit company able to, which is sheriff's department, able to verify if the policies in the police department are actually being implemented. And that's a huge red flag. I'm sorry, my mic.
The mayor's down a little bit.
I'm sorry. To, to see it's being implemented, which, they didn't even look at that to see it's being implemented, to see.
So what, what is your point here?
I'm just.
I'm just trying to get.
I'm hitting to the point, thanks. The Lake County Sheriff's Office wrote about the policies in place, but never investigated the policies. It was just very, very easy to do. Throughout the entire study, there was no mention of any policies are being executed. Also, they indicate the lack of clear dates and signatures, which means officers should be signing off on certain policies, saying that they read them, that they understand them. Why do they do that? It's a liability issue. If it takes the town and if it takes the police department, shows that the officers are aware. They put in the audit report, that's a huge, huge problem and it's a red flag. So one thing that has to be, should be addressed immediately and you being, you know.
They didn't say it was a huge problem, they're just identifying it.
It, they did to me and it said, it is a huge problem. Fire qualification, I know the chief goes a little more than what the state requires and it's kind of sad what the required, the state, the state requires for officers to qualify. It's kind of sad when you, it's a skill they have to maintain because it's use of force and you could possibly use it, it takes someone's life. So, and then they talked about the anti-harassment policy. Lake County Sheriff's Department once again stated the policy is listed, but they can't confirm if it's properly implemented or used as required. Another big issue. The last thing you're going to talk about is the evidence. The evidence in there, they said they couldn't confirm 28 items, but they, they're able to track down seven of them, they were just mislabeled. But there's 21 items of evidence that were either mislabeled, destroyed, returned, they don't know what happened to them. Now, when you're in law enforcement and you're involved in evidence.
You can just state facts and we're actually.
I am, I understand facts.
To.
Thank you. When you're in law enforcement, it's critical that you maintain chain of command and you know where your evidence is. Chain of custody, I'm sorry. And know where your evidence is. This was clearly not done. And this is a huge issue on top of cross-contamination with evidence in the evidence locker.
That has been corrected.
Okay, it has been corrected.
It has been corrected.
Okay. With the conclusion, the Lake County Sheriff's Office audit report, the Howey Hills Police Department is inconsequential and very superficial and would not meet the standards and requirements of accreditation assessment. The Sheriff's Department audit team should at minimum reviewed all the critical elements of the police department to include all case law regarding the accountability of police personnel, use of force, proper evidence processing, holding cells, prisoner transport, civil rights, et cetera. The Sheriff's Department report left serious concerns and questions on whether having a police department is feasible. Based on their own report, not only is it not feasible, but should we take a hard look at this? So that's, once again, if you haven't seen it, I'll give you a copy at the end of the meeting. Have a copy of it and you should read it for yourself. So that's with the audit report, I told you, I gave you time to look at it and I bring it up this meeting. Follow-up on the water rate, I know we talked about that, possibly doing a study about.
We are looking at that. One of the reasons we're speaking is for getting the rest of the register heads so that we have the ability to gain the data. Now, we do, it will take a little bit of effort because the register heads are not all the same version and so we can't get single data reports.
Okay.
So we have to get somebody that will help us. And we have talked to Sarah Rittaker, who is one of the people that helps us with our CUP and our corrective action plan. And she has referred us to another individual who does this kind of work.
Okay. So Mr. McGill, I guess it would help a lot if you had your meter heads on to see as far as this. Okay. Next thing is, we still haven't touched on the Eagle Opportunity Act and as far as the chief not advertising.
We abided by all of the requirements for that.
We didn't advertise for.
You mean when we moved people from part-time to full-time, what are you speaking about?
Yeah, that's one of them. When you moved Officer Vanek and I know Dennis, I can't remember his last name. Pronounced, thank you. It clearly says in there, you have to, if the salaries are the same, then you don't have to. But a part-time temporary officer is not the same salary as a full-time officer, so they have to advertise.
He has the ability to promote from within and not only that, he spoke with the mayor and the mayor approved those, at that time, Mayor Niebel approved the promotion of those officers from part-time to full-time. And it wasn't even a progression.
Yeah, it's not a promotion.
Patrol officer to patrol officer. And so this has been put to bed previously. It wasn't administrative function and it is, we are done.
Yeah, I just brought it up and in fact, that it's not officer to officer. They're temporary, part-time police officers. Now, if you advertise and you advertise that you want to hire a full-time officer and then you want to advertise to hire a part-time temporary officer, there's two different candidates you might get there.
You have a difficulty with it?
So, I thought I had difficulty with it. So the problem is you have different candidates for different positions. So you have someone who wants a full-time position.
Councilor McGill, this is not hiring 101. If you have an issue, I addressed it and we are done.
So you're stopping me from talking.
We are stopping you from talking about that item.
Okay, because I'm not being repetitive, you're stopping me from talking about it.
You are, you are being repetitive and you are trying to sway rather than just saying that you have an issue.
No, so that has to be addressed.
You are done with that item.
And then the other item under that is the part-time officers being not advertised. And that was never addressed. Please tell me where it was addressed, because it wasn't.
Part-time officers being advertised?
Yeah, that's advertised for the position.
Yes, we did, we put that on the website.
No, not for Vanek and Cavalera. And that was never addressed. So.
Well, it had the approval of the mayor at that time and it is older than old.
Okay. The next issue is, I know you drafted up and you created and we approved the town code of ethic.
Yes.
And I'm bringing that up because of Mr. Niebel's behaviors over the last four meetings. And just for the record.
Councilor Niebel.
Just for the record, you set up yours.
Councilor Niebel, Councilor Niebel, that is enough, you are out of order.
No, I'm not, sir. I'm not, sir. I'm bringing up the fact that every, for the last four meetings, he has walked out on me and he's used profanity towards me and it's all on video. So I bring that up, I don't know.
Councilor Niebel and Councilor McGill.
This is my comments. This is council reports. He is violating code of ethic. And as the mayor, you drew that.
Actually, I have never heard him say.
It's on video, I got it. Called me curse words as he walked out. So as the mayor, I'm hoping you address that because of his behavior.
I just did.
He did it to him.
Well, just it.
The last four meetings, this meeting's out of order.
Councilor McGill, I did not witness that. I saw him get up and leave, but I was interacting with you and I did not hear him say anything.
I will send you a clip of the video of him cursing at me and walking out. Now, this is the fifth meeting as he walked out. Now, next thing is the budget. You talked about it being a living document and I know we talked about finding extra money and talking about possibly giving up our councilman tag, which I know we talked about earlier and I think we put that to rest, but it doesn't stop other councilmen from volunteering their money to go towards it. But being the living document that the budget is, maybe we can start moving money around to cover what you're talking about with the extra expenses.
It's quite early, actually, in the process to start moving money when we're talking about, we're only in December. We haven't even closed yet, ever, yet.
No.
So we should probably get through at least a quarter, if not two quarters, before we start doing the rest of the amendment.
Yes, but we have no idea, as everyone said, what this is going to cost as far as attorney fees, as far as election. So I'm saying, because like you said, there's things in that budget, you said it's a living document that we could possibly stop spending it on. I know with, for one example, is one with the Howey Tribune. You put in a budget, $2,500. We're three months into the budget, two months, and we already spent $1,000 with them. So once again, I think that's something you should look at.
They're drawing on that money, but we use that.
Yes.
And it has been very beneficial and valuable in communicating the CUP, the corrective action plan, town business components, as well as the Christmas festival and other activities. So I think that that is money very well spent, getting the information out to our residents because it does get to every door, which is not always the case when residents are looking at, don't look at the agenda, don't attend the council meetings. I think it is an incredible value for the dollar.
Just one of many examples within a budget, just one I pointed out. The other thing here is with the public records request. I emailed you about the 11 offenses and I said, you know what, you want to put it to rest. And I emailed you my next step. I think we have to make a public record for everyone to have. I don't have it in here, I'm just saying it. Those 11 offenses that I'm forwarding to the state attorney's office and governor's office, they should be put on record and for people to have. So I'm just mentioning it, I sent you an email. It had 11 offenses as far as the top caption saying, where are they going to go at this point? I think it's fair for the residents to know that where they're going to go at this time. So for people, available, you can get a copy of the new version as far as where they're going. I listened to Ms. Gallagher and she's still here, I apologized for what you went through. It's awful and I was hoping that we get some kind of response from the council or even the mayor saying apologizing to her, she seemed extremely emotional and, you know, none of us should go through that, so.
I don't think we know both sides of that story.
No.
I know that the chief called me afterwards and I don't think that that's the whole story nor do I believe that they, I do know that her neighbors have had issues because I have heard those as well, not only about noise but other items. There's actually a business being run out of that neighborhood and that's been an issue as well.
And one of them, Tom, or both of them?
No, Amanda's.
Okay. So are you going to talk to her to see, get her side of the story and just to see what, they said, you said there's two versions, I don't know if you can sit down with her.
Well, I thought, I think she did a very good job of summarizing and she didn't ask me to reach out to her, but I will.
Okay. That's it, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, but you know, you said something about, when Councilor McGill was talking about hiring somebody, you said the mayor gave authority. Well, the mayor does not have authority to supersede the state or federal hiring process, period. So, I'm sorry, I have to repeat again? No, I mean, that doesn't matter. It has to be followed, period.
Our policies follow the law and we are following the policies.
I know it's a fact, we hired three people and they didn't advertise. We can say we did, you weren't, as a matter of fact, I don't think they won't count at the time.
To the citizens.
Before you got here. Cue it.
Sorry.
I know.
Just talk to me. There you go.
I don't like you.
I don't like you either.
So that doesn't matter what we say or do, we have to follow those guidelines.
Right.
And you've got people saying they weren't, you've got people saying they were.
It's.
As a mayor, I would make sure to protect the town.
And I have looked into those items and I am satisfied with the results of mine.
Okay.
Any other comments?
That's it.
Anything more?
What's your turn?
Well, we were going to ask for, I know we were going to start the next time, but I thought I'd just be proactive.
It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, it is not on the agenda.
So you're asking for public comment now?
Well, it's not on the agenda and we're going to follow that, so.
Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. What's your turn?